Okay, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. And we will start with taking continuances and withdrawals. Sir, do you have a continuance or withdrawal?
Yes, on behalf of forty of all the one of my husband and wife, I would like to say continuance for line nine sixty-three fifty north.
Matthew Payne representing the applicant Starbucks Corporation on that matter. The applicant would like a one month deferral in order to resolve some issues raised by the Alderman's office.
This is, uh, which calendar number?
One eighty. One eight zero dash two four dash S.
You're requesting a one month continuance?
Yes, so please.
It's gonna have to be June? All right, it's gonna have to be June. This is calendar number one eighty twenty-four S will be continued to June twenty-one twenty-two four, the two P M call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you, Chairman.
Any other continuances or withdrawals? Oh, uh, Counselor?
Thank you. You sure?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Attorney Louis Powell. We're on page number ten. We have three items on the two o'clock agenda, page number ten.
Under Edna circle out, I have me to my meeting right, Dr. Huggins, Thomas Huggins. CEO of the organizations, Chairman Sanchez, we request a continuous to May seventeenth.
Okay, uh, it's gotta be June. Calendar numbers one seventy-three twenty-four S, one seventy-four twenty-four S, and one seventy-five twenty-four Z will be continued to June twenty-one twenty-two four, the two P M call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you. Chairman Sanchez, for the record, the reason why we ask, and we really believe that we can deliver what zoning is asked for, and also my, uh, my client, Miss Huggins, a tremendous lot of, uh, resources have been used in terms of getting donor participation, and he's presently in building court, and we're trying to wrap things up. That's why we're trying to press him May seventeen.
I, I, I appreciate the reasons, but, um, when, uh, I'm told that our schedule is full for May, then our schedule is full for May, so it's gonna have to be June.
Understood, Chairman.
Thank you. So, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Barton?
Um, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. And as team board member, sorry, I have a little bit of anxiety, if you're lucky, thank. Um, for the record, there are lines with a lot of this, goes Decky, Del Cita, American, and Bratato. And, Mr. Chairman, we would like to see us for another continuance on page five, under item forty-five twenty-four Z. We have made some progress with the community organization and the Alderman who are both in support, but there's still a couple neighbors that have some questions and concerns, so we'll just kind of help um, do a little more engaging with them, and if it's easy to use, since I know you've had tried a few continuance, if you need to bump this to July, if that helps. Otherwise, June is fine.
Okay. All right, well, let's, uh, let's, let's do July. Um, this is calendar number forty-five twenty-four Z will be continued to July nineteen twenty-two four, the two P M call, and no further notice will be given.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Fatikas?
Yes, Chairman, Nick Fatikas, uh, philosophy Sam Biggs on items of four sixty twenty-three S in four sixty-one twenty-three Z on page twelve. We are seeking a withdrawal without prejudice. There were some branding issues, and we don't fully give the site's gonna be able to go forward, so we could withdraw for now. If something changes, we'll come back.
Okay, understood. So this is calendar numbers four sixty twenty-three S and four sixty-one twenty-three Z will be withdrawn. Any other continuances or withdrawals?
My name is Tom Moore for the record. Calendar number on page thirteen, uh, calendar number fifty-nine twenty-four Z. Twenty-four twenty-eight west here, as to withdraw.
Okay. But you're keeping sixty twenty-four, is that correct?
Still going to make it an as of right, build a whole lot, but no longer ask for any variance on that.
Okay.
But we need, we still need to justify the existing three plot in order to make the big amount of buildings.
Understood. Um, all right, so this calendar number fifty-nine twenty-four Z is withdrawn.
Thank you.
Do you, any other continuances or withdrawals? Seeing none, we will call our first case.
First three cases, one sixty-one twenty-four S, one sixty-two twenty-four Z, one six three twenty-four Z, twenty-three forty-two West Adams.
Right, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number one sixty-one twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor to add two additional residential units for the conversion of an existing five-story thirty-one dwelling unit mixed-use building to a thirty-three dwelling unit residential building with nineteen existing parking spaces on site and two new bicycle parking spaces, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated April eighteen twenty-two four, prepared by Hannah Architects. Would everyone who is planning to testify on this matter, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. O'Brien's expertise and Council Fatikas, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Chairman, again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the law offices of Sam Biggs. Here on behalf of the applicant twenty-three thirty-four Adams LLC, the applicant owns the subject property in twenty-three forty-two West Adam Street. The subject lot is a regularly shaped, measuring fifty-nine feet wide by two hundred and fifteen point three feet deep. It's approved with a five-story mixed-use building currently containing retail space upgrade and thirty-one residential units above. Uh, given the property's location east of Southwestern Avenue, uh, on an otherwise residential block, the applicant is seeking to convert uh, two of the ground floor retail units to two residential units. The massive footprint of the five-story building will remain without change, and all of the proposed conversion work would be contained within the first floor of the existing structure. In order to permit the conversion, the applicant is seeking special use to allow residential uses below the second floor of the existing structure, and then companion variations to reduce the minimum lottery total for thirty-three units, and reduce the off-street parking pursuant to T O D. I have three witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Sir Vladimir Barabek, our, uh, project architect, John Hannah, and our M A I designated appraiser, Jerry O'Brien. Uh, with that, I'd ask to call my first witness.
Go ahead.
Vladimir, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Vladimir Barabek, twenty-three forty-two West Adams Street, Chicago.
And you are the man, sorry. And you are the managing member of the applicant, twenty-three thirty-four Adams?
Yes.
LLC, I'm sorry. Um, and again, you're proposing to convert those ground floor retail units, is that right?
Correct.
And the resulting building will have thirty-three units, otherwise remain exactly as it exists today?
Yes.
Uh, is it true that you and I included a affidavit summarizing, uh, just witness statements in this case?
Yes.
If you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements to be provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, John, may I please state your name and address for the record?
John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects Inc., one eighty West Washington, Chicago Illinois, Licensed Architect, State of Illinois.
And John, you, uh, designed the original five-story mixed-use building, is that right?
She did.
You also designed the proposed conversion plan for the project?
That's correct.
And it's your professional opinion that the irregular lot dimensions, uh, and frankly, the property's location on an otherwise residential block are the hardships that the variations and are the special use was overcompensate, right?
That's correct.
Um, and it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case as well?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the statements to be previously provided?
Yes.
Uh, and lastly, Mr. O'Brien, um, you have already been recognized, uh, as an expert. You're familiar with the property at twenty-three forty-two West Adams?
Yes, I am.
And the scope of your assignment was to evaluate whether the request of special use implies the general criteria for special uses, is that right?
As well as the two variations requested, correct.
And based on your analysis of the surrounding area, you believe that the special use and variation approval criteria are met in this case, is that right?
My special opinion, all of the criteria for special use, as well as the two variations are met in this particular instance, yes. It could be more specific if you'd like.
Well, and Terry, you did prepare a written and书面 report containing your findings and conclusions?
I did, yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, um, your testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your written reports, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
And it, uh, it's your understanding, a copy of that report is also already been submitted to the board?
That is correct, yes.
Chairman, I try to do it best. Um, if you have any questions, uh, the team's here to answer those.
I appreciate the brevity. Uh, any questions from the board? Seeing none, we will take it under advisement. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next case, one sixty-four twenty-four Z, sixty-one fifty-four North Mill Lock.
All right, uh, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, all right, uh, what brings you here today?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, my name's John Shagru, I'm an attorney for S U G R U B. Uh, I'm attorney for sixty-one fifty-four Restaurant Incorporated, and we are here today seeking a variance to allow a P P A license, uh, within a hundred and twenty-five feet of a residential area. Uh, with me is Nancy Floridia, who is one of the owners of the business, as well as the owner of the property.
And, uh, what is it that you intend to, um, with P P A license, are you gonna be charging to cover? Like, what, what's the purpose?
The purpose is just to have a bit, a bit of entertainment for my customers, like one-man band, even karaoke, because we are over the one hundred capacity, uh, for normal, uh, bars and restaurants to have live entertainment.
Okay.
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, they've always done the music, uh, it's always been on the first floor where the occupancy is only ninety-two. And so we never actually really thought that there was an issue, um, and several other bars were only on one, one story. Also offer the music, uh, their competitors around the area. Uh, this, the garage, uh, happens to be a two-story restaurant and bar. And a couple of months ago, the city came in and said that we have to count the occupancy on the second floor, even though there's no music going on there. Um, so that, that's what triggers the, uh, the need for the P P A.
Okay. And you're Nancy Floridia?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and, um, uh, can you just state your address for the record?
My home address, sixty-two thirty-nine North Lemay, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four six.
And you prepared an affidavit, uh, with regard to your submission, is that correct?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, you testified consistent with that affidavit?
Correct, yes.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we appreciate it.
Next case, one six five dash twenty-four dash Z, seventy-seven twenty-four West Columbia.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Good afternoon, Karen Shaw on behalf of the applicant, Diane Deliden. Uh, today I have with me Ms. Diane Deliden and our architect, uh, Robert Murphy. Uh, we are seeking a variation, um, to seventeen-two three oh five A, seventeen-two three oh nine A, seventeen-two three oh nine C, seventeen-two four oh two B, seventeen seventeen three oh nine, in order to construct a one-car garage. Um, the, the property is an improved lot at seventy-seven twenty-four Columbia Avenue in Chicago, measuring thirty-four feet by sixty-eight point four feet at the east property line, and ninety-three point eight three feet at the west property line, and contains approximately two thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight square feet. The property is bounded by Avondale Avenue on the northeast side, um, that a, with a two-story home, and also bounded by, uh, Columbia Avenue on the south. As the board will see, it is a wedge-shaped property, which is causing the hardship at issue. We are seeking, um, setback uh, from the Avondale side. Um, the, the problem is that the Avondale side is considered a frontage, but really it's the rear of the property, and the neighbors in this wedge shape, they use Avondale as a rear, um, and we did submit photographs of the neighborhood in which other neighbors also use the Avondale area as a, as a space for their garages. Um, so, uh, we do, we are seeking, uh, that seventeen-two three oh five A, which requires a twenty-seven point two five setback, the, um, not applied in this case, because if it were applied, the garage would actually be inside the house, which is the problem. Um, and also it would interfere with the, um, open space requirement, the ten-foot open space requirement between the garage and the home. Um, currently, as planned, there will be eleven feet of open space if we're not held to the twenty-seven point two five setback standard. Um, in terms of the side setbacks, uh, there is only one place for this garage, and as it's shown on the plans, um, it really cannot be put anywhere else, and for, for that reason, unfortunately, there's, there's not enough space for the side setbacks at five feet. Uh, we have submitted affidavits, uh, from Ms. Deliden and, uh, Mr. Robert Murphy, who, who created the plans. Ms. Mr. Deliden, uh, if you were to testify today, I'm sorry, uh, do you recall us submitting an affidavit on your behalf in support of your application?
I do.
All right, and if you were to testify today, would you testify substantially the same as the documents that we provided? Mr. Murphy, uh, you're the architect for this project?
Correct.
And you created the plans in this project?
Yes.
Okay, and we submitted, you recall, we submitted affidavits on behalf of you for this project?
Yes.
If you were to testify today, would you testify substantially similar as the documents that we provided?
Yes.
Right, uh, that concludes our presentation. If there are any questions, we are happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
Commissioner Esposito, I have a quick question about the parkway back of the property between Avondale and property itself, because it was particularly thick or deep.
Uh, it is a little bit bigger than the average depth, but it actually, Avondale doesn't have a curb. So it's one of those older W P A sort of streets without a, without a curving gutter.
And are there other properties nearby that also effectively put driveways through the parkway, that part?
Yes, I believe that is some of the photos.
Area photograph.
Yeah.
There are others that have gone through the parkway.
Yes, there, there are. Um, we did, we submitted, uh, two addresses, um, and some photographs, I'm not sure if they made it into the presentation, but, uh, seventy-seven thirty-two West Columbia, sixty-seven sixty-eight, and sixty-seven seventy-two North Avondale, sixty-seven eighteen North Avondale, and sixty-seven hundred North Avondale.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, we'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next two cases, one sixty-six twenty-four Z, one sixty-seven twenty-four Z, forty-one fifty-eight North Oakley.
Okay, uh, would everyone planning to testify on this matter, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Yes, thank you very much, Counselor Acosta, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good afternoon, I'm under Acosta here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I have with me here, Mr. Mitchell, who is the applicant, he has lived on the property with their, or your children, and Chris Jackson, fifty-four architect in the project. Subject property sits on a twenty-four by one twenty-four parcel, so slightly smaller uh, than a typical lot. It has a two-story home with an existing garage. Shuld purchases property in twenty-twenty. At the time that they purchased it, it had the improvements that you see on it today, including the, uh, the stair leading to the roof deck, the roof deck, the pergola, and the deck. Um, they were not aware of the permits for this recent purchases. Recently, they submitted, they wanted to repair, refurbish the stairs and the deck, and so they wanted to do that properly. They submitted for a voting permit to the city of Chicago, at which point they discovered that there was no original permit uh, for, uh, the deck and the stairs, and primarily the stair leading to the deck, which is the one item that has brought us before this board, uh, because it encroaches in the rear yard since it is perpendicular to the rear wall. The hardship here is caused by not only substandard lot, but also the location of the home and the garage, so if you look at orient this stair, other than all the reconstruction that it caused, uh, it would leave very little room at grade. Uh, there's also insufficient space between the existing deck and the rear and the garage. While they have enough square footage for the rear yard open space, they don't have enough size to fit the fifteen foot in diameter circle that must be in that rear yard open space to make it qualify. So the first request is for a rear yard setback variation. Uh, the second request is to relocate the rear yard open space to the roof deck on top of the garage. The intended work is essentially to span it there, taking up the floorboards of the stairs, taking up the floorboards in the roof deck, and replacing it with the new similar boards at the same location. Uh, we have, they have contacted the neighbors, there are ten letters supporting the file, including a letter of support for the immediate neighbors themselves and the immediate neighbors to the west. We also contacted the Alderman's office, who doesn't opine on variations, but they were aware of it, and then identified the issues. That I'd like to proceed with. Witnesses, not gonna state your name for the record, please?
Matthew Shuld, forty-one fifty-eight North Oakley.
And we prepared an affidavit on your behalf, which you reviewed and executed as accurate. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Chris, state your name.
Christopher Jackson, eight-two-zero-four Pine Bluff Court, six-zero-five-six-one.
You're the architect for the project?
Correct.
Uh, and similarly, we prepared an affidavit on your behalf, which you reviewed and executed as accurate. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. That, Mr. Chairman, board members, we're happy to answer.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, one sixty-eight twenty-four Z, twenty-four twenty-three West Forty-Six Place.
All right, uh, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Very much, Counselor Polpak?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, my name is Paul Polpak. I represent applicant, uh, Danny's Construction, Bogdan Maitis, who is to my right, his architect, Mr. Peter Sterniak is to my left. Uh, we're here today requesting a application for variation to reduce the front setback from the required seventy-eight point five feet to sixteen for proposed two-story single-family home. The hardship here is that based on there are thirty-two lots from Valleydale on this block. Three of the homes are situated in the rear of the lot. Under the R three zoning, we have to take into consideration their setback. So, if we, uh, uh, don't get this variation, we're gonna have about a thirty-eight foot setback from the front, which is totally not compatible with the rest of the block. That's a hardship. If this was adjacent to any of the other thirty, twenty-nine buildings, we would not have to be here today.
Okay. Understood.
Yeah. Mr. Maitis, would you please state your name?
My name is Bogdan Maitis, B O G D A N, M A I T U S.
I can spell your last name one more time?
N I E T U S.
Mr. Maitis, are you the applicant?
Yes, I am.
And you've met with your neighbors on this project, and you've discussed a single-family home with them? And you've explained to them that this property will be closer to Forty Seventh Street, is that correct? And you've got done other properties in that area, is that correct?
Yes, all over.
No further questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Sterniak, would you please state your name?
Peter Sterniak.
You're a licensed architect?
Yes.
And you've testified in front of this board before?
Yes.
Sterniak, you visited the property?
Yes.
And you prepared an affidavit as to your findings?
Correct.
And that affidavit makes this property in substantial compliance with the zoning code, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you were called to testify any further, you testified substantial conformity with that affidavit?
That's correct.
No other questions?
Any questions from the board? Uh, this is Commissioner Esposito, just one question. So you're planning on building at the same setback as your immediate next-door neighbors?
He just said that we're trying to follow the existing majority setbacks of the lot, not. What we want to do is we want to build the new home in substantial conformity with the other front yard setbacks on the block.
Any other questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next two cases, one sixty nine twenty four Z, twenty six twenty six, West Twenty First Street, and one seventy twenty four Z, twenty six thirty two, West Twenty First Street.
Take care. Andy here.
One minute before we start. When I came in here, my client was speaking to the neighbor, I just need to know what, what on.
Okay. Do you want us to pass you for one?
For one, yeah, I just want to know what, what, what transpired between that conversation.
All right, Victor, can we pass, we're gonna pass that one and we'll come back to it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, let me go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number one seventy one twenty four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed financial service use bank. Michigan State University Federal Credit Union. On the ground floor of an existing four-story mixed-use building on a pedestrian street within six hundred feet of another financial service use, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Michigan State University Federal Credit Union. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated April twelfth, twenty twenty four, all prepared by Smith Group. Whatever one's planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do, yes.
Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Jared's expertise. Thank you, Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the record, my name is Mike Noonan with Foley and Lardner. Our offices are at three twenty one North Clark Street, Suite three thousand in Chicago. Um, represent the applicant, Michigan State University Federal Credit Union, or MSU FCU, so I'll be referring to that. Here with me today are applicant representative Jim Hunsanger, Chief Risk Officer for MSU FCU and urban planner Jason Jarrett of Okren Kessel Associates. The applicant is, for you today, seeking special use to operate a financial use in an existing building located at twenty five hundred North Halsted within six hundred feet of two other financial, other financial institutions on a pedestrian street. They've submitted this request with permission of the property owner, eight hundred Altgeld LLC. Um, it's gonna be a basically a first-floor renovation of an existing building, just vacant retail space. Three thousand two hundred fifty three square feet, a vacant retail space, and it's gonna be renovated for the use as a credit union. Um, as we've gotten our findings back, this request meets the criteria for the approval of special use and that it will have a positive impact in the surrounding area. So first, I'd like to call Jim Hunsanger with the applicant. Mr. Hunsanger, please state your name, profession, and business address.
Yes, I'm Jim Hunsanger, the Chief Risk Officer for Michigan State University Federal Credit Union, our offices.
Sorry, could you slow down?
I'm sorry, yes. Jim Hunsanger, Chief Risk Officer for Michigan State University Federal Credit Union. Our offices are located at three seven 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 West Road, East Lansing, Michigan.
And is it correct that you filed this application with consent of the landowner, eight hundred North Altgeld LLC?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. And as Chief Risk Officer for MSU FCU, you have specific knowledge of the subject property and the project?
Yes, I do.
And could you speak just a bit about the community and neighborhood outreach around this project and coordination done with the aldermen?
Yes, we have continued to be in contact with forty third, um, Ward Alderman, Tim, Timmy Knutson. Uh, uh, the, uh, prior to our, um, application, uh, our initial outreach was in August of twenty twenty three, before our lease was executed. And again, we've been in contact through our attorney since the application was filed. Um, we've also received a letter of, uh, no objection from the Wrightwood Neighborhood Association, the local community group, and a letter of support from, uh, the alderman's office, uh, both of these have been included in our materials that we submitted.
Yep, and if you need copies of those, I have them, but um, it sounds like no. And, uh, Mr. Hunsanger, is it correct you provided a signed witness affidavit in connection with this matter?
Yes.
And if you were called to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Uh, next, I've got Jason Jarrett. Uh, Mr. Jarrett, please state your name, address, and profession.
My name is Jason Jarrett, I'm a certified planner with offices at one forty one West Jackson here in Chicago. Worth it from Okren Kessel Associates.
And Mr. Jarrett, you were retained by the applicant to conduct an urban planning analysis, their special use application to establish a credit union in the existing building located at twenty five hundred North Halsted, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. And have you prepared a report detailing your analysis, findings, and conclusions? And did that report get submitted to the board?
Uh, yes, I have, and it was.
Thank you. And is it correct that if you were called to testify any further today, that your testimony would be consistent with the statements contained in your affidavit? And the findings of fact, and conclusions in your report?
It would be.
All right, and then specifically that the proposed development is consistent with the general criteria for approval of special uses?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. And, um, if the board has any questions, we're available for those, but I have nothing from the release witnesses.
Any questions from the board?
Would, uh, I've got a question, would a, would a University of Michigan alum be allowed inside?
We're, we're happy to serve anybody. All right, uh, with that, we will take this under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a great weekend.
Going back to one sixty nine twenty four Z, and one seventy twenty four Z, twenty six twenty six, West Twenty First Street, twenty six thirty two, West Twenty First Street.
Right, uh, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for, yeah, appreciate, cleared up a lot of things. Good afternoon, my name is Paul Polpak, I'm the attorney for the applicant TA Development. Uh, to my right is Mr. Andy Chimenya, and to his left is Tony. And Jeff, and Jeff, and my left is our architect, Mr. Peter Sterniak. We're here today requesting variations for both twenty six twenty six, Twenty First Street, as well as twenty six thirty two, Twenty First Street, to reduce the minimum lot area from the required three thousand feet to that of twenty nine thousand six, sixty, twenty nine hundred sixty four feet. Property zone RT four, if this was a standard lot, we wouldn't have to be here today, we would have more than enough square footage, and we could do that. We're thirty six feet short, and the lot is twenty four by one twenty three. That's our hardship. We took a little continuance, and could you please tell, uh, the board what your conversation was with the neighbor?
Uh, the neighbor was just curious as to when we're gonna be starting the developments, uh, during what time terms we'd be working. Um, and whether or not, once we were completed with the uh, project, if we would be putting up a privacy fence, uh, to make sure that there's, uh, nobody coming in between the, the yards and maintaining the effects that was at the rear of the property. I told her we would definitely do that. Um, and if she had any further questions, she could definitely reach out to us, and we're at the project on a daily basis. So if she has any additional questions, just feel free to come on over and speak with us.
And you did share your contact information? And I presented an affidavit to you and you signed it, sent it to the board, if you were asked to testify in further compliance, you testified.
Yes.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay.
Peter? Please state your name.
Peter Sterniak.
You're a licensed architect?
Yes.
And you visited this site? And, and you prepared an affidavit in your opinion that this request meets the standards of the variation section of the city of Chicago, is that correct?
That's correct.
If you were asked to testify further, you testified substantial compliance in that affidavit, is that correct?
That's correct.
And no further questions to my architect.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, you all, everybody.
Next case, one seventy two twenty four S, six hundred South Western, unit two.
All right, I'm, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number one seventy two twenty four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed barber shop. Uh, whatever one's planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shanatess, Chairman Shanatess, appreciate it. For the record, my name is Louis W. Powell the third, I have an office at fifty three West Jackson, Suite twelve eighty two. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Razor Red Grooming Solutions LLC. The applicant is seeking special use approval in order to establish a barber shop located within one thousand feet of an existing personal service use in a B three dash three community shopping district in the near west side community. For the record, the subject property is located at six hundred Southwest, Western Avenue, unit two, is a five thousand thirty eight zero square feet lot, improved with existing four fourteen thousand seven hundred sixty four point four square foot, three-story brick-built, three-story brick and masonry mixed-use building with a multi-unit retail space on the first floor, located on the southwest corner of the Western Avenue and West Harrison Street. Furthermore, the applicant is proposing to establish a nine-chair barber shop in the existing two thousand square foot storefront located in the furthest west store, adjacent to the alley on the first floor. The proposed barber shop will operate Monday through Thursday, Monday through Saturday, Monday through Saturday, from eight AM to eight, eight, eight PM, closed on Sundays with walk-ins welcome. For the record, to my immediate right, I have Mr. Terrance L. Watt Willis, operator and manager of the applicant Razor Red Grooming Solutions LLC. Also, Mr. Chairman, we have to my far meeting's right, we have an attendant, our land use specialist, whom you were familiar with, Tony Musserwar, who I believe has already been accepted as a land use expert.
We've seen Kareem today, but we do recognize his expertise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, Mr. Chairman, I just ask him a couple of brief questions.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make it brief. State your name for the record.
Uh, Terrance J. Wheels, owner, uh, operating manager of Razor Red Grooming Solutions, six hundred South Western, unit two.
Thank you. How many years have you been a licensed barber?
Over twenty years, twenty four, twenty five years license.
And for the record, your reason for moving to this location is because your previous location due to code violations was closed down?
Yes.
For the record, that you were very well established on the west side of Chicago, was City of Chicago, where the clientele that has athletes, prominent businessmen, so forth, and so on.
Correct.
You've already supplied an affidavit, correct?
Correct.
And would your testimony be substantially the same as your affidavit?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, unless the board asks for you, I have no further questions to ask to Mr. Willis. Thank you. Moving on to Mr. Musserwar. Uh, Mr. Musserwar is going to establish as a expert, briefly, just brief few questions. Mr. Willis, you submitted a land use, a planning report?
I did.
For the record, with your testimony, you substantially saying is stated in your land, uh, analysis?
Yes, it would.
Mr. Chairman, are there any further questions that I need to ask?
Uh, not that you need to ask, but perhaps that I want to ask. Uh, just one question, on, uh, the previous, um, location that you were at that was, that was shut down for violations, what were those violations?
Uh, structural, structural being, structural damage, like the building was about to collapse.
So it had nothing to do related to your business?
I have all paperwork about the project.
Okay. Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you, sir.
But, Chairman, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next case, one seventy six twenty four S, six eleven, West Belmont Avenue.
All right, so go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number one seventy six twenty four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed barber shop. Everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Turner with offices in Elmhurst, Illinois, and I represent the applicant, the Chicago Haircuts and Shaves LLC. The applicant is currently leasing the subject property consisting of approximately eight hundred and fifty square feet. A first-floor commercial space in the building commonly known as six eleven West Belmont Avenue in Chicago. Rashid Ali, immediately to my left, uh, is the manager of the applicant. Uh, the applicant seeks a special use to establish a barber shop at the subject property that is located within a thousand feet of an existing personal service establishment located in a B three two community shopping district. The applicant has been in existence since January of twenty and was previously operating at two oh one West Superior. The only owner of the superior location sold the building. Uh, the owner unfortunately did not renew the lease, uh, because it had plans for development and the applicant was forced to relocate. Uh, the applicant has a team of three licensed barbers and is looking to hire one additional barber, uh, or hairstylist. Uh, the applicant is a proud African-American-owned business, and the shop will be managed by Mr. Ali, who is the founder and sole owner. Uh, the applicant will continue to offer haircuts varying in different styles, shaves, and related services. His hours of operation will be Tuesday through Friday, ten AM to seven PM, and Saturday, nine AM to four PM. Uh, at this point, I would like to call my first witness, would, would be Mr. Ali, who is to my immediate left. Uh, and Rashad, can you state your name for the record?
Rashad Ali.
And you manage the store, correct?
Correct.
And all the, uh, uh, characteristics that I just mentioned, you agree with all those?
Correct.
And you prepared an affidavit, uh, that has been submitted, uh, in support of the findings of fact in this case, is that correct?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, you would do so, uh, uh, in conformance with your affidavit, is that true?
Yes.
Hey, no further questions for Mr. Ali? Any question about the board? Any question by the board? So at this time, I would like to um call my second wis- witness, uh, Mr. Joe Ryan, uh, to my to Rashad's immediate left. Joe, could you state your name for the record?
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI President LaSalle appraisal group with offices at ninety four fifty five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And Joe, you've testified before this board on numerous occasions, correct?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we'd like the board to recognize Mr. Ryan.
The board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Joe, uh, you visited the site and prepared a report regarding your opinions and conclusions for the special use, correct?
Yes.
You also signed an affidavit summarizing your opinions and conclusions, which was submitted as part of the findings of fact, correct?
I did.
And in your opinion, uh, the all the criteria for a special use has been established in this case?
Yes.
Um, and if you were to continue to testify, you would do so consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your affidavit, is that true?
Yes.
Um, I have no further questions for Mr. Ryan.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you.
Next two cases, one seventy seven twenty four Z, one seventy eight twenty four Z, twenty one forty eight North Law. Uh, going out of order, case one seventy nine twenty four Z, ten seventy two North Milwaukee.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Would everyone who's planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The board recognizes uh Mr. Musseroar's expertise. Counselor, you can proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, um Chairman, and members of the zoning board. My name is Lama Korchid. Um, I represent the applicant CHR Corporation. To my right, to my left-hand side, I have um Mark Dimitrovich, who's the managing member and owner of CHR Corporation. I also have Mr. Musseroar, um, a land use consultant, and to my right side, I have the architect, uh, Mark Machansky with um John Split Architects. Today, the applicant seeks a variation to establish a public place of amusement license to provide live entertainment, music and a DJ within one hundred twenty five feet of an RRS three residential single use district located at the C one three neighborhood um commercial district. Um, the subject property is forty eight, forty four thousand eight hundred square feet of lot improved in an existing six thousand five hundred fifty square foot two-story brick commercial building. There has been no improvements um to the lot. It uh it's not as of date, it's a it's a restaurant and it's been existing as such for the past thirteen years. And so um applicant will be making no changes to the footprint nor expanding the footprint of the subject property. And as mentioned, the subject is an existing restaurant and tavern. Um, the applicant is now seeking to enhance the customer experience with live entertainment, music and a DJ. And the subject is located in a commercial district where the proposal would otherwise be allowed. Um, subject has existed in this location and has enjoyed community support of its operation. Um, proposed PPA for the existing restaurant and tavern use is offered to enhance the experience for the existing patrons of the business. And proposal is consistent with the ordinance and will help to maintain and stabilize the existing business. Proposed enhancement will help the existing business compete with similar businesses to the same zoning district. Existing subject property is zone C one three, but for the fact of the RS S three district, proposal would be permitted by right of use in a current zoning classification. Um, I have Mr. Dimitrovich here, who will testify um as to the uh as to the uh components of the affidavit that has been submitted with a packet to the zoning board. Would you like me to go through his testimony or?
No, I think you can have him swear to his affidavit. You can actually have all your witnesses swear to their affidavits and then we'll open it up for board questions.
Okay. Um, Mr. Machadsky, will you swear to the affidavit submitted to the zoning board?
I do.
Mr. Dimitrovich, will you uh swear to the affidavit submitted to the zoning board? Mr. Musseroar, will you uh will you swear to the affidavit and the expert report submitted to the zoning board?
I do.
Alright, um. Who's uh, sir, are you the applicant? Could you state your name for the record, please?
Uh, Mark Dimitrovich.
Okay, um, the uh have you um been operating this uh restaurant tavern for the last thirteen years?
Correct.
Okay, and you're gonna add a live music component?
Correct.
Um, have you had any uh issues with noise citations or anything like that um from the city of Chicago?
We've never been issued a noise.
Okay. Um, wh- what kind of uh live music are you anticipating?
As like I said, we've been there for thirteen years and we operate, we've got a large venue. And part of our specialty, we do whole animals. We do large format dining, so therefore we do a lot of big events. We do a lot of corporate events. We do weddings and things like that. So that's majority of what our business is. We're not looking to open a live music venue. We simply are looking to be able to continue to get those kind of bookings where somebody may have a DJ or a small acoustic set. It is not a music venue of any issue or DJ venue, anything along those lines. It operates as a restaurant. That's what it is. It's almost, you know, like a banquet facility.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Recalling, one seventy seven twenty fourteen, one seventy eight twenty four Z, twenty one forty eight North Law. On the end, Scott.
Over here?
Yes.
Alright, would uh everyone who's planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Counselor Borstein, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Sorry, by the way, we didn't realize, you know, we're standing out there.
We're around vast.
So anyway, we're we're thrilled to be here. Uh, so Scott Borstein, uh, on behalf of Board of Education. Uh, this is regarding Prosser Academy. I'm joined by Evan Smith, Director of Capital, and Mr. Justin Rossman, who's our landscape architect. A fairly straightforward project. This was a um a uh driver's ed facility in large parking lots. It was one hundred percent concrete uh prior, and so we uh, you know, went through a uh program to update that and um we we actually, I can find more testimony, we could add it, but we actually added a significant amount of landscaping to the lot, but just because it's a it's a driver's ed facility, you can't just add landscaping throughout it, right? It doesn't work, so we had to kind of shift it around, but we do, we exceed the overall amount of green space um required, and we have the required number of trees that are just placed in a different way. So for you today, we have two applications. We have a uh front yard setback, a relief request, and then we have some landscape uh requests which, you know, can be done administratively, but because we're here for the for the yard, we lumped it all together. So uh, we we have an automatic support letter, which I sent, whatever that's worth. And uh, the project was posted on the alderman's website. Sent out the notice letter. Of course, we heard nothing, no, no objections. So with that, I will call our witnesses. First, Evan, you want to state your name?
Evan Smith, Director of Planning and Design for CPS Capital.
And Evan, uh, you're familiar with our project, the findings of fact, the affidavit that you submitted?
Yes.
And if you were to provide further testimony today, that testimony would be consistent with the affidavit and the findings?
Yes.
Justin, state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Justin Rossman, uh, with Psych design group at eight 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 South Michigan Avenue. She's the architect for the project. Apologize, I'm wearing forty two plus mats.
Oh, okay. Um, and you're also familiar with the findings of fact and the affidavit that we submitted when you signed?
Yes.
Relative to this project, and if you were gonna provide further testimony today, that'd be consistent with um those conclusions and findings in the affidavit.
Yes.
That's all we've got for you today.
Any questions from the board? We will take this under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next case, four thirty nine twenty three S, seventy six twenty eight South.
We have four thirty nine twenty three S.
Oh, they're calling and I'll skip it. He's gonna find out who's supposed.
Okay. Let's go to the next one.
Okay, uh, next case, forty six twenty four Z, sixty six forty South Kevin.
So fast, people aren't even ready for us. Hey, uh, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Right, thank you very much, sir. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, one hundred and sixty six forty South Kevin.
And um who are you in relation to this application?
Okay, I'm I'm here, uh, representative. She's here, she's here, too. The owner.
Oh, okay, um, ma'am, what's your name?
Valeria Mansillas Garcia.
Okay. And who's the gentleman uh to your left?
You know.
My friend.
I live there at the pri- at the purpose is awesome.
Are you uh, say sir?
No, no.
No, okay. Um, alright, so I have a little bit of a recollection of this. Um, you were here last month, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and um you are okay, this is the, this is the one where you've got the rear deck, the covered front porch and the um detached two-car garage with accessory attic. And I believe at the last hearing, it was the testimony of one of you that all of these things were created after you purchased the property, is that right?
Someone that saw uh like the the back porch, it was it was uh already like that.
The back porch, okay, but the garage is was created after you purchased the property?
Uh, it wasn't a garage, like a regular garage, but when she came over to the signature request to uh well, remodel the the garage and they told her, well, they tell her that she needs only a nice permit. So she pulled out the easy permit, then um the inspector stopped by and he says that uh wasn't uh the correct uh. Better.
Can I have this gentleman's name, please?
Yes, Juan Ledesma.
Can you say it louder and spell it?
Juan Ledesma, J. J. N. L. E. D. C. M. A.
Thank you.
Okay, and um, alright, so the so the garage was created after the uh uh Ms. Garcia purchased the property. Who was the contractor that built that garage?
Um, you got the information, I'm gonna drop off the information on that package, so everything is there.
Is the contractor of for whom who uh is that in here?
Yes.
Are you, sir, are you an attorney?
No.
No. Alright, um, so you can't represent the applicant?
Okay.
Uh, only an attorney could represent the applicant, okay? So I wanna, I wanna deal with the applicant.
Um, okay, so that comes up here.
So now, do you need a tra- does she need a translator?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, alright, so um, let me swear you in uh uh Mr. Ledesma as a interpreter. Uh, do you um it, well, first of all, am I correct that the language is Spanish?
Yes.
Okay, do you uh 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 swear and affirm to accurately and truthfully translate English to Spanish and Spanish to English?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, let me just ask Ms. Garcia while I try and look for it. Ms. Garcia, do you know the name of the contractor that you hired to build the garage?
It's uh, it's Abimael Canales, Abimael Canales.
Is uh that contractor that you just referenced, is that the same contractor that also um did the work on the front of the house?
Does that mean?
Yeah, it is. And did that contractor tell you that you needed permits to do the work on the front of the house in the garage?
Yeah, he uh, she says that he's supposedly, okay, was she paying him to uh pull out the permit, but she didn't know he did.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'm confused, so the which one was, when you purchased the house, which was existing already, the front or the back?
Uh, uh, the back.
Okay.
And the front? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, yeah, e- existing was the back deck, right, the back?
Yeah, I brought you the pictures of the previous uh listing.
Just the new one?
Uh, it it also, it is not, it was not pictures on the on the videos listing.
This, but this listing that I have in my hand right now, this is, this is the newer listing, right? This isn't the old one, is it?
This is the old one. Yeah, that's what it looks like. All the time they have the old ones. Was no picture for the back uh porch?
Okay, there's no picture of the back porch at the from the twenty seventeen MLS?
Yeah, but you have the the survey.
Oh, okay, this is the old one. So the, the twenty-seventeen, this is, all right, so I'm looking at a survey from April thirteenth of twenty-seventeen, and I don't see on this survey the back deck.
Yeah, it was from one room of twenty-seventeen, and then there was another one for twenty, um, I believe it was eighteen. I, 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 uh, put them in the boxes that I, I bought for you too.
Ms. Garcia, about the property, when?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Garcia, when did you buy the property?
Se- two thousand seventeen.
So the
How is in the listing right at the, the day which purchased it and the one they had, right?
It was listed as of February twenty-two of twenty-seventeen.
Says when it, when it was closed.
Uh, it's April twenty-eighth, uh, seventy.
Okay, all right, so the, so the survey from April thirteenth of twenty-seventeen doesn't show the back porch. So let me, let me ask this question again. Did you, did your contractor also build the back porch?
No, the fro- the front porch.
Okay.
On the front.
Okay. So it's your testimony that the back porch existed when you bought the property?
Yes.
All right, are there, uh, any other questions from the board?
See, I found this other one that was done under twenty-eighteen, I'm sorry, twenty-eighteen.
Is this after you lived there?
No, uh, it was, uh, it was, uh, online.
So, but again, we don't see the back porch on this.
Yeah, exactly, this, this is what I found, um, but it's kind of like a strange, like, uh, this, uh, that one is from twenty-seventeen, then, uh, appears that one's twenty-eighteen. And then it's kind of weird because I tried to call those companies and they said they didn't make it, but they, it appears in there.
So the wha- what about, uh, what about this one? Oh, uh, I'm looking at the homes dot com listings, do you know when this is from?
Uh, to be honest, no, the ones that, uh, the, the ones that I just gave you, uh, is the ones that, uh, it was for the previous listing when she purchased the property back and it was in seventy.
Done sometime after June one of sixteen. Uh, Ms. Garcia, so I'm, I'm looking at the first big photo from this homes dot com listing. And you can see on the back of the house, there's no deck, you're telling me that there was a deck when you bought the property?
Yes, because, uh, maybe they fixed before, you know, because it was the removal.
Possibly when she purchased the property, uh, the owner or whoever lived there, he was telling him, I was, uh, it was a rehab shop.
All right, um, so the the name of the contractor again that you hired was, what was the name again?
Abimael Canales. A B I A B I M A Canales C A N H L P S.
And how did you find, um, is, is it a, is it a he?
Yes, right.
How, how did you find Mr. Uh, Canales?
Uh, he's working the next door.
He was working next door. Okay, the, the owner, the previous owner that, that sold the house to her, they had him on the next floor fixing the house, uh, soon.
And Mr. Canales told you that he was gonna pull the permits for the work?
Yeah, uh, she says that, yeah, he, uh, she paid him and he pulled out a permit, but she doesn't know it was a correct permit.
And how much did you pay Mr. Uh, Canales with all the work?
Okay, uh, he pulled out the permits and, uh, he charged her five hundred and sixty for each of them.
But how about for the work?
For the garage, um, she pays forty-five thousand, but she bought the, the, the part of the
Material.
The materials.
Okay, and for the front? Any other questions from the board? Have you communicated with the contractor to ask him why he charged you for the purpose that he did not hold?
Oh, she says, I mean, she didn't manage, she didn't, she didn't tell him that because he bring the, uh, the, uh, the permits, but she, he didn't give her any, I'm sorry.
Did he obtain an easy permit for part of the project?
She did, actually, when she, uh, came first, she tried to explain to them that she wants to remodel the garage. So she explained to the guys right there what she wanted to do, and they, they told her, okay, the ocean is, is, is then she find out because they expect to show up in there, then when she find out that it was not like a right permit for her, then this, when she hires the other person to put the correct stuff.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm clear, so you paid forty-five thousand for the back?
Yes.
And twelve thousand for the front?
Yes.
And so the work, what was there? What was there before and what was, what, what was done that, I mean, what did you pay for?
Okay, the garage was, uh, it was, uh,
Uh, if you can direct her to her. Cause if it was there, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, it was a small garage, like a rubber garage, so garden, wouldn't have that garage.
Right, but was that garage de- demolished and then the new garage built?
They put a new concrete and so everything is new.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions from the board?
No.
All right, we will take this matter under advisement, thank you. Oh, I don't even know what you gave me anymore.
My name is Daniel Flores. That's right, I, I have, uh,
Try to go back to four thirty-nine twenty-three S.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mr. Ware, are you here for a conti- for a continuance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Seventy-eight twenty, six south. How this girl?
Seventy-six twenty-eight, South Cottage Grove. All right, calendar number four thirty-nine twenty-three S?
Yes, so I was on your, uh, attorney, Colin Powell, he said he he read to it, uh, that he had double booked the stake and asked for a continuation. Up here.
Okay.
There's a lot of work done on the cases, you know, the new architect involved, the architect involved, and permission of the neighboring churches.
Okay. All right, uh, calendar number four thirty-nine twenty-three S will be continued to June twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four, the two P M. call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you, sir.
Next two cases, sixty twenty-four Z, sixty-one twenty-four Z, twenty-four thirty-two West Erie.
Right, uh, whatever one planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much, now, sir, more, you can proceed with the short form.
My director, my name is Director Tom Moore, to tell the board who you are.
I'm Michael Boita.
Who is the lady to your left?
Uh, my wife, Jamie Boita.
And your plan is, if we're able to legalize the, uh, hundred-year-old three-flat, that is, allow it to be on its own lot, um, then the lot next door will become with a buildable lot, and you and your wife hope to build your family there.
Correct, yes.
As a matter of fact, your family is on the way.
Yes.
Okay, and, um, so the three-flat, you, with your parents' help, you and your brother, who was here last time, bought that um, some years ago, with this idea that, uh, you eventually would build a single family in the lot next door, it's in a right?
Yes, exactly, in twenty-twenty.
And that, uh, three-flat, it turns out, it's been there before the zoning code, is very close to the lot line, less than a foot away, so we need a variance on that, is that right?
Yes.
A side yard variance, and then also, uh, again, because it was built before the zoning code, uh, we need a rear yard open space, uh, to comply, to make it totally compliant, is that right?
Yes.
And, um, uh, you have given up on the, uh, idea of also getting a variance on what will be the buildable lot if the board grants this, uh, variance that you're requesting on the three flats, is that right?
Yes, correct.
And, um, you spent a lot of time, uh, trying to negotiate with the, the gentleman who was here last time, and it was not gonna work out, so we've withdrawn that case.
Yes, correct.
Um, and you and I worked out a, a affidavit where you would address all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this case legalizing the three-flat, uh, and if you were to continue to testify, testify consistently, is that right?
Yes, correct.
And, uh, will you, sir, tell us who you are?
My name is Victor Drapso, I'm a licensed, uh, architect, uh, twenty-one twenty-three, North Damon, Chicago.
And if, uh, the board grants this, uh, variance, the three-flat will be uh, fully compliant on its own lot, is that right?
That is correct.
And, uh, that would free up the lot next door to be a buildable lot, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir.
But they'd have to build, as of right, they'd have to comply with all laws on that one.
Correct.
Uh, there's no variance requested on that.
Yes.
Uh, and you and I worked out an affidavit where we addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance request on the three-flat, and if you were to continue to testify and testify consistently with
Yes, sir.
Your affidavit, is that right?
Yes.
That's our case.
Any questions from the board? Take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last case, sixty-six twenty-four S, twenty-four fifty-seven, West Montrose.
Uh, a- applicant is
Opponents over here.
All right, uh, we are on the last calendar of the day, sixty-six twenty-four S. Just a little bit of housekeeping before we begin, as you can see, there are three of us here. Um, and it is my understanding that, um, uh, uh, two additional commissioners have been nominated, they have not yet, um, been, have been approved, but, um, because there's only three of us, all three of us must agree uh, on your application, if one of us doesn't, then it will be denied, um, so with that in mind, does the applicant want a continuance, um, for five board members, um, or do you want to proceed today?
At this point, we're ready, answering ready, we've uh, delayed them a lot, we trust your opinion, at this point, please. And, uh, we are answering ready, so we're not asking for a continue.
Okay, okay, all right, with that, um, I'm gonna go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number sixty-six twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed new tavern within an existing single-story commercial building, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, the Dog Bar LLC, two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings and the light and sound mitigation letter, all dated April fifteen, twenty-twenty-four, prepared by Group Z Design Architecture in the Plan of Operations Draft Version Four, revised April twelve, twenty-twenty-four, prepared by the Dog Bar LLC. And three, the rear outdoor area is limited to staff access And three, the rear outdoor area is limited to staff access to from trash deliveries and bicycle parking. It is not to be used by customers nor their dogs due to the proximity of the adjacent residential uses. Um, would both the applicant's witnesses and the objectors, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Just to give um, everybody here, uh, a little bit of an outline of how the proceeding will will go. Uh, first, the applicant will put on their case in chief, all of their witnesses will get to testify, and then we will turn it over to the objectors to state your objection, and you will also have the opportunity, if you wish, to ask questions of the applicant's witnesses. And then, once that is complete, we will turn it back to the applicant for brief rebuttal and closing. Uh, so with that, counselor, you can proceed.
Thank you. With that, my name is Daniel Rubenow, Attorney at Trolley at Kaplan Attorneys. My clients at the Dog Bar LLC at twenty four fifty seven West Montrose. Uh, Scott Diddy and Morgan Laporte are the owners of that LLC and the applicant. Uh, with us today is also Michael Woland, who has an extensive C V regarding property values, property uses, zoning questions, and he also prepared a detailed analysis of the.
And for the record, the board does recognize Mr. Woland's expertise.
Thank you. Uh, and do you have a copy of the report?
Of course.
Uh, by way of background, the back, the applicants uh, have what would seem to be a very simple concept, one that's really not unfamiliar to the city of Chicago. The owners want to have a friendly, upscale neighborhood place, where people can bring their dogs, have a drink. And there are places in the city which actually fit that bill. Um, and what we could be found out, though, is that there's some doubles with details, which is fine, and that's what we're here for. Um, just to let you know, Morgan Laporte works with animals. In her regular occupation, Scott has extensive, extensive experience in the hospitality business. They put a lot of thought into this business. Um, they looked at other locations that allowed dogs, like doggy daycares. And they re- they reasoned that while their concept is not a doggy daycare as defined by the ordinance, um, what the ordinance would call an animal care facility, they still wanted to model the location as responsible business owners. Um, so they've put in, uh, they've they've come up with plans and ideas to avoid animal fights, animal illnesses, other possible issues by putting in place a program where they would keep it, uh, keep their dog, keep the dogs highly monitored, uh, so to speak, in a shortage. Um, after about three years of searching for an appropriate location, they found a former greenhouse plant store at twenty four fifty seven West Montrose, and after months of negotiation, they signed a lease uh, January two thousand twenty three, which is over a year ago, and paying rent on that space as we go through this process. Uh, that's a freestanding one-story building that faces uh, busy Montrose Avenue. Um, it also shares an alley, to be sure, with some residential home, but it's also adjacent to an Aldi grocery store, and it's parked a lot directly to the east. Um, the building, just to be clear, um, we've gone through a lot of changes here. Um, the building does have an outdoor patio, uh, and that was part of the initial uh, special use application. Um, as the, from the last several weeks, we have discussed this with uh, zoning, and we are withdrawing that. There's the outdoor patio right there, the the chain and section, chain link section. We are withdrawing that from the special use application. Um, at this point, we are withdrawing that from licensing. Um, or will be withdrawing that from licensing once the that application starts up, so I don't know if we need to thank you with an official uh, denial letter that changes that, but the denial letter mentions an outdoor patio, which is now not going to.
Let me just look back at the vision of the letter.
This probably occurred within the last two.
Right, uh, um, because part of the conditions uh, of the Department of Plan and Development's approval, number three is the rear outdoor area is limited to staff access to from trash deliveries and bicycle parking, and is not to be used by customers nor their dogs due to the proximity of the adjacent residential uses. So, yeah, so as part of the department's recommendation, you would not have any ability to open up a patio with dogs, uh, you know, and 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 people uh, use utilizing that space. And do the applicants understand that?
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
All right.
Yeah, it's 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 a weird hybrid where frankly, by by right, an outdoor patio on that level is allowed by zoning. But because this is talking about the use as a whole, it kind of got put in there. Uh, but at this point, it's not going to be part of licensed premises. So I think it becomes moot, and we will follow the guidelines from. Um, there also, by the way, is a garage door, which you can see in the outdoor patio in the back area as well. That opens up onto the alley. There was a long lead-up on how we got to this point over a year ago, and this is very much detailed, I'm going to try to make this short, but we had months of negotiations with the Department of Business Affairs, Consumer Protection, uh, regarding licensing, and that included uh, discussions with the health department, and to make it short, the conclusion was made that, yes, dogs can be on these premises on the basis of health regulations. A couple things, uh, dogs need to be on a leash, which was different than the initial plan or concept. And the health department also said, uh, and I think this is consistent with the ordinance, that there can be no food license here, uh, if there are dogs allowed. And so that put us on the track, which was a change as well. We thought that food would maybe temper this idea of drinking um, with the dog. Um, but because of that, that put us on the track tavern. Um, and this is frankly not what the applicant initially intended, uh, because I think there's some connotations come with calling something a tavern, but this is legally the route that we have to go with. Um, and because of that, you're talking about this, there's been many compromises, understandings, agreements between us, the Alderman constituents, Department of Business Affairs about how this place will be run so as to not be an arbitral tavern, how it's licensed. Um, because this is Zone B three two, uh, a tavern does needs need a special use, and just to be sure, uh, there is also a moratorium that must be lifted. Um, initially, just F Y I, we we asked about simply changing the zoning, and the Alderman suggested he he did not want us to do that, so we're going through the special use. Um, as part of the license process, we submitted drawings and a short statement of business purpose. Uh, this was January twenty twenty three with the zoning employee at Department of Business Affairs, Consumer Protection. In this case, kept it simple. Um, we are trying to be a dog-friendly tavern, no, pardon me, dogs are allowed, no food, no animal care services. Um, they had us pay for special measurements requested by zoning to make sure they know what other liquor licenses within four hundred feet, that passed. Uh, we knew that we would need special use, so in February, we started the special use application. We received letters of recommendation. Um, at that time, from Lincoln Square, pardon me, the Lincoln Square, Ravenswood Chamber of Commerce, uh, North Center Chamber, and other individuals, and since then, I can introduce these, and I'm not sure if you have the latest, we have received several other letters of support.
Counselor, let me just uh, jump in for a second because um, uh, the Department of Plan and Development has um, raised an issue, I think they want to speak.
Uh, okay.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, Joe Penya, City Planner, Department of Planning and Development.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, the, in the list of activities that will not happen on site, we would just like confirmation that there will be no dog play area on site. Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's consistent with the health code and what they told us, so. Okay. Um, just to let you know, uh, during February twenty twenty three and into March, we had not received a uh, denial, uh, denial of zoning certification. What we did receive eventually was factually incorrect. Um, it was about an expansion of an existing tavern onto a patio, which was not what we were doing, and there were some other anomalies, which I I won't go into unless you really want to know.
No, really?
Yeah, um. Um, the upside of this is, we actually asked the zoning administrator for opinion that was lost in the mail, never answered, and but we've kept going, uh, and finally received a corrected denial letter August twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three, about five months after that initial letter. So, in the meantime, we filed our preliminary plan of operation business affairs, which I think that you might have or should have the fourth version of that draft. Um, that was an effort to be proactive, because there's licensing and zoning. Um, that obviously yet to be agreed to uh, by the commissioner of this, or local, or commissioner, but I assume that she would either accept it, pull, or add to it. Um, special use application was filed in November twenty twenty three. Um, the Alderman suggested meetings. We had official meetings, uh, January tenth, two thousand twenty four. Um, and we also discussed additional meetings that we had. The main concern that that seemed to be coming up. Um, and this was generally for people who share the alleyway with the dog bar. Um, well, part of the issue was frankly, Aldi next door, and there were a lot of problems with Aldi. Garbage. Tests that happens. Um, and I couldn't help think that, you know, if Aldi were a better neighbor, like, we were trying to reach out and stop all that. Um, yeah, they wouldn't be in opposition to us here. Um, this was an opportunity to collaborate with the neighbors, but it seemed like the big sticking point was Halloween. Um, eventually, we kind of, with the Alderman, came to the issues of sound, light, and waste.
Sound, light, and waste?
Yes. And Morgan Scott worked on these, along with me and and Joe from zoning, and Nancy from zoning. And so we had, we have, I don't want to say conceded, but we've agreed to many different things. Uh, initially, there was this plan with the outdoor patio, where we put up all sorts of soundproofing material, uh, as much as the building code would allow in terms of height, it became clear that the neighbors still were upset about that, about that, so that's why we officially withdrew the outdoor patio from the plans. Um, the original roof, as you can see there, is, remember, this is a greenhouse. Uh, that roof is made out of acrylic, um, and sort of a passive building, no H vac uh, for the large space was really needed because of that transparent roof and because of the material that it is. Um, the only thing is, is that there are panels up there which open for ventilation, or can be open for ventilation. Well, the neighbors and uh, the administrator expressed a concern that this would let noise bleed from the bar. Just want to remind you, in the plan of operation, we cannot have amplified music, so there's going to be a lower level of noise than the typical tavern. Um, but that type of acrylic is actually made as sound deadening material. Uh, we have the specs, if you really want to see them, but it uh, lowers the decibels. In addition to that, we have agreed, and I think this is extraordinary, to keep the vents closed during business hours and install an H vac system to the tune of about twenty thousand dollars, so that those vents are closed and the heating and cooling is done by the H vac system. In addition to that, Morgan and Scott met with uh, a company that does soundproofing materials, and uh, there's plans in for an investment of acoustical panels, which are all sound deadening as well. Um, because that roof is transparent, there was some suggestion that possibly light fixtures might cause light pollution in the area. And so zoning astutely said, well, can you give us some plans showing all of the lighting beaming down? So that's part of the plan, uh, all of the light fixtures, and there's actually not many, it's a pretty dark place, are all beaming down, so they don't cause light pollution. Um, the back garage door was a concern for uh, noise and that type of thing. I need to report.
Oh, uh, we've got Joe again. Uh, go ahead.
Uh, Claire, attention, the roof material has been described as a polycarbonate material. Uh, just clarifying because I understood that it was being described as a vinyl material. Or acrylic material.
Very soon. Yeah, I mean, this is the panel, um, or this is the pamphlet, I should say, and they call it a polycarbonate sheet. Um, but I think that the board member is correct, that it's it's referred to as different things. As you can see, if you want to see this, there is there are stadiums made out of that, with roofs made out of that material. Um, it's it's pretty heavy duty. I believe that that was permitted in nineteen ninety three, when it's installed, but I'm not sure. Okay, um, oh, the, sorry, the back uh, garage door. Zoning asked us uh, via the constituents. And the constituents said via zoning, uh, they they don't want that open during business hours. And so that back uh, garage door is will be closed during business hours. Um, that's the difference that we've uh, don't agree with the doc. Um, initially, the applicants, or pardon me, uh, there were people who were concerned with the amount of waste uh, happening at this location, um, and it is kind of a specialized location. The applicants did contract or contact, I should say, waste management, they have a plan for waste, this is the standard plan that waste management uh, comes up with with these types of businesses with the animals, and that's the plan that we're going with. Or hours have been restricted, they're not a tavern out, they're not tavern hours. Uh, Monday through Thursday, three P M. Nine P M. Friday, it's the latest, they're open from three P M. Till ten P M. Saturday, ten A M. Till nine P M. Sunday, ten A M. To nine P M. This on top of the fact that Morgan and Scott are very aware of how dogs behave. Um, Scott will describe plans to eliminate dog nuisances or problem dogs. Um, and so we've met with people, we've discussed the issues. Um, just to let you know, there have been several outreach programs that the applicants have have uh, been a part of. They're at North Center Farmers Market four times last year, they had an open house. Um, that was note that they notified the Alderman about, that was August third, two thousand twenty three. Bailing list, uh, posting for that.
For what?
A bailing list, uh, people are notified, I should say, via mailing list. They had notifications physically posted on the building for that open house in August of two thousand twenty three. Um, there was all that information about that open house was shared with uh, different chambers. Uh, they've had throughout the last year, conversations with neighbors, including neighbors uh, whose house direct, whose garage, I should say, directly butts and shares the uh, the alley. Um, talked with them, went throughout the space, I believe that they might have had initial objection, but I don't believe that they're here today. That objection did not continue after those discussions. Um, in addition, the space throughout the summer and fall, they've been there, invited people in, dozens of people have stopped by. Uh, excited to see this open, they met for coffee with a neighbor, Jamie Jackson, who wanted to talk, that was in December, we had, they had a voluntary meeting, uh, where they notified everybody along Pensacola, Campbell, and Montrose, one person showed up. Community meeting, people did come via Zoom and describe what happened. Um, and then since then, in January, we've had many discussions with zoning, the Alderman. Um, the first time we were given individual neighbors' email addresses was April fifth, two thousand twenty four, and Morgan reached out to all of those people and been in touch with them ever since, and the feedback has been mostly positive because of the fact we've taken away the outdoor patio, limited the hours, limited the light uh, situation, limited the sound. That. Should we move on to witnesses?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to call Scott Diddy. Uh, Scott, can you uh, please state his full name?
Scott Diddy, last name.
Scott Deedy, last name is spelled D E A D Y.
And uh just some housekeeping, uh you've read uh the packet, the special use packet application uh and you affirmed in writing that this is true, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you still abide by that?
Yes.
And the changes that are that we've made as well, you testified as well.
Yes.
What is your address?
Live at three eight four zero North Bell Avenue, Chicago Illinois six oh six one eight. Uh it's actually in the same ward and neighborhood of our building.
Do you consider yourself a neighbor?
I am. I enjoy our quiet neighborhood.
And uh who do you live there with?
I live here with our other applicant, Morgan Laporte, um and our two dogs, Peter and Chris.
Okay, and you and Morgan are the owners of the LLC, right?
We are, yes.
Um and you've just heard my introduction to the case, was that accurate?
Yes, it was.
What's your current job?
I am the partnership success manager for a hospitality technology company. Uh so any sort of bar restaurant equipment, uh in case you guys are wondering, how are they going to make this profitable with all these concessions? All of our equipment, as far as the software and also merchant processing, so credit cards and things like that, uh getting it basically cost is a huge advantage that most businesses aren't lucky enough to have the opportunity to take advantage of.
Before your current job, what did you do?
Um I was a lawyer for a number of years representing hockey players. Um at the same time, I was managing parks and restaurants around the city of Chicago and surrounding suburbs. Um did that for approximately twelve years. Um started in in college, you know, two thousand five, I took a brief hiatus during law school. They don't let you work. Got back into it in two thousand nine, when I began my career representing athletes and uh law school is expensive, so that's why I got back into the bar and restaurant management space.
And uh just so we're clear, did you ever uh manage a bar in the north center neighborhood?
I did. I worked at a uh bar, uh bar restaurant called Big Bricks, thirty-eight thirty North Lincoln. I worked there uh for eight years. Uh my last position there was the general manager during the COVID pandemic. Uh and we actually had an outdoor patio immediately abutting a uh residential house. And over the years, we never had one complaint uh over sound, so I'm very well versed in the neighborhood and hospitality in that.
When did you first meet Morgan?
Uh met Morgan first in January of twenty nineteen, uh no, July twenty eighteen. It took me a while to get her to me. We started dating in twenty nineteen, uh January of twenty uh nineteen.
And uh in lieu of having her testify, what what type of business is she in?
Uh currently, for the last few years, she's been working as a vet assistant at Riser Animal Hospital in St.oke. Uh prior to that, she was essentially running a food manufacturing company out in the suburbs. As we were, you know, going into this venture, we realized that she wasn't going to have the time to commute out there and work a full-time job. So we were trying to find something that would be like a part-time uh equivalent while she could focus on the business. She's the majority of the customers and the one that likes the microphone to them, before her lawyer. Um so she has been uh working there for the last couple of years. Originally, it was going to be about a six-month stint there, but this is taking a lot of time, so she's still there, uh just working there yesterday.
And it's safe to say you guys love dogs?
We do. Uh I've had three dogs. We have two currently. Uh we also foster dogs through driveway rescue.
Uh how and when did you come up with this idea of a uh this business?
Yeah, so last, uh it would be February twenty twenty, um she's from Little Rock, Arkansas, her whole family's down there, so we went down to go visit her family. And uh her sister took us to a place called Bark Bar. Uh there's like sixty of these places, not specifically Bark Bar, but around the country. First time we'd ever experienced it was just an open, big open space, um concession style bar. It wasn't like a sit-down place, but you grab a beer, let your dog run or round off leash. They had an outdoor area. And it was just a very like family-friendly type environment. And so we started thinking like, why don't we have this in Chicago? Um obviously, with February twenty twenty, we know it was looming. Um so when we got back over the summer, we were kind of thinking like, why don't we, why don't we have this in Chicago? Why don't, why there's something like this here? So we started investigating it. Uh I have a close friendship with the former Restaurant Association Illinois treasurer, so we reached out to him. He owns a couple of restaurants and he was like, you might be able to do this because, you know, everything's very business friendly right now. So we were looking for empty spaces, um but everything that was closing down were actual bars and restaurants. For us, that didn't really work because it was too congested for our space. We really need more of a larger open area for our concept, which is obviously evolved. Um those places were not closing down. So our search for a property was about two years before we even found twenty-four fifty-seven Montrose, even though we live right there. I bran casted the day before our real estate agent told us it was available on the market. So we love the fact that it's less than three quarters of a mile from our front door. I walked there, um most of the time, like sold my car, I walked there with our dogs. Uh it's right between two parks, and so it just really kind of fit exactly what we're looking for, the environment, the atmosphere, the neighborhood, the community, all of that.
And you mentioned, uh you you mentioned a concept that you saw when you were thinking about this. That concept is plainly not what you're doing now, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's because of what?
Uh it started with the just the concessions that, you know, we can't have the dog off leash to the health department. Uh so he said, okay, that's fine, you know, we'll have the dogs on leash. Uh I know you mentioned the fact that uh we were kind of steered towards the tavern route, um and also then the special use application. Uh but we've basically tailored that down so the dogs will have key on leash. Um that obviously made some concessions as far as the space itself, with the things like the patio, because they did have a really nice patio. We were planning on doing outdoor turf and stuff uh outside, but we've now uh, you know, put the kibosh on that.
And just to reiterate, your hours have changed from what you initially planned to do?
Yes, that's what I, they weren't going to be aggressive to begin with. Um you know, our ideal customer is going to be somebody that comes after work with their dog to grab a beer. Somebody that comes there Saturday morning, maybe grabs a coffee and brings their dog over. Maybe you're going out for a Saturday night meal and you want to get your dog some exercise before uh or just some activity before, and the weather's terrible. Uh that's a big reason why, you know, having the indoor space solely is okay for us too, because our weather is obviously not that great here in Chicago, so we have plenty of days when uh people will need an alternative to Warner and Wells Park than are right next to our building.
I think that it might be in the plan of operation, but we discussed some screening uh programs that you have. Can you tell the the board what what your plans are? What are your rules about keeping nuisances from dogs to?
Yeah, so as you mentioned, we, in the process of investigating this, we wanted to contact a lot of uh animal daycare places, you know, training facilities, so we could just operate at their standard level of care, even though we weren't required to. Uh Urban Pooch is a local company that we have been in uh close contact with for quite some time. Um so first off, we were planning on doing uh onboarding with the initial time you bring a dog in, a socialization visit to make sure that they can play nice with the other dogs, also taking their vaccination records and health records to keep on file and also make sure they're kept current. Um on top of that, they gave us some, uh they put us in touch with a company that basically trained staff on how to identify when an animal is starting to become aggressive, so that you can get in front of it before the aggression actually takes place. So we're going to be training all of our staff that we'll have on the floor as an additional level of security. Uh you know, it's a big thing. We take our dogs to the beach all the time, and it can be scary at times um with the lack of of safety and oversight, so that's just something we take very seriously.
And um in terms of working with the Alderman and the neighborhood, um you know, what is your philosophy in general about doing?
Um we've been from the very beginning, as soon as we leased the place, very involved with both. We leased the place, our space in January of twenty twenty-three, uh January twenty twenty-three, within thirty days, we reached out to the Alderman's office. Uh we're technically in North Center, but we are directly across the street from Lincoln Square, so we direct, we reached out to the Chamber of Commerce for both neighborhoods and the neighborhood associations of both neighborhoods. Um had a in-person meeting with the North Center uh Neighborhood Association within thirty days of signing our lease. I can't remember the exact date of that, it was early February of twenty twenty-three. Um the Alderman's office initially said, you know, if you get the letters of support from all four uh organizations, we'll go ahead and give you our stamp of approval. Uh we got the support of all four. Um and then obviously, as we're going through zoning, that's when some of these uh, you know, kind of conflicts with some of the immediate neighbors being at a service and we had to make some alterations to our plans.
Can I introduce a document or send it aloud at this point?
You can.
Okay, I'm going to show Mr. Deedy a document. Can you tell us what that is?
Can you also share a copy with, uh share one with us and share with the affected listeners?
For sure.
Um so on the left is basically uh just a timeline of the outreach that we've made to the neighborhood, and then on the right, you'll see just those concessions that came as a result of the conversation we had. So throughout the the summer of twenty twenty-three, um you know, we had appearances at the North Center Farmers Market. They were kind enough to actually waive our our fees for our booths. We had a table there, talked to dozens of people over the course of several Saturday mornings. Uh we hosted our open house. Uh we posted notice of it everywhere. We had good conversations with neighbors. We actually had the neighbors directly across the alley. Were not coming over, we invited them in for our open house, walked them through, answered questions, gave them our business cards, thanked them for their voicing their concerns that we could address them. Um and then, you know, over the course of the summer, we are constantly there with the door open. You'll see in that document on the bottom or the uh maybe this bottom left corner, um that was constantly projected on the uh wall facing Montrose. Hey, are you curious? Come on in. Uh posting on our social media, come see us, um we invite you to the open house. Uh so just tried as as much as we could to get our our voice out there. Near the, oh yeah, sorry.
Sorry, let me just ask, uh just so that we're not going over the same thing. Um this uh document was prepared by you and Morgan, is that correct?
Correct.
And this just summarizes your outreach?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to ask that it be entered into the record. It's just summary of the work that's been done.
Yeah, it'll be entered. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh near the end of twenty twenty-three, uh Jamie Jackson, already one of our neighbors, just here, uh reached out, just said, you know, I'd like to grab coffee, just voicing concerns on behalf of the neighbors. We'd be more than happy to. Had a great time just chatting, getting your concerns, kind of summarized everything afterwards that we agreed to limit our patio hours to the hours between five and eight, because she works from home. We understood there's a lot of people who work from home now. We didn't want dogs barking and build a Zoom call. So we were only going to have the patio open from five to eight. Um even on the weekends, we'd have it closed early. Obviously, as you guys know, it's kind of moved because we later disagreed to shut the whole thing down and uh other things that we were going to put a fence up, soundproof fence. So everything seemed to be fine, and then and then as time went on, there just kept kept, concerns kept coming.
Uh anything else you wanted to discuss, anything you missed?
Um I guess only just, you know, the fact that that at no point have we ever said no to a request from the neighbors. We've said yes to every single request that's been asked of us. We were pushed down this route of pursuing a tavern license, which has a stigma to it. Uh but as I've mentioned, I've never been to a bar, a tavern that closes at nine. Uh from the beginning, we were not intending to operate in a traditional bar sense. And we will continue to do everything we can to make sure it's a positive relationship with the neighbors. We just hope you guys will give us the opportunity to do that, because not only have we made comments, but we've stood behind everything we've done.
The cross order?
Uh no, um no, you go to your next which.
Uh I I would call Morgan Laporte, but only to swear to the uh veracity of the application.
That's fine. You can do that.
Okay, now Morgan Laporte, do you please just say your name for the record? And uh you're familiar with the application here?
Yes.
And you swear the veracity of the application? Then I would call it, actually, witness, who is Michael, who I believe has uh stupid statements. Okay, uh go ahead, Mr. Morgan.
For the record, my name is Mike Owen. My property address, office address is nineteen ten First Street in Highland Park. My background, I was awarded my M A I designation nineteen eighty-four. Law school in Illinois State General Empressor Award nineteen ninety-one, consulting in real estate, really commercial real estate for the forty-five years. I've been acknowledged as an expert not only by this board, but by county as well as federal in federal and tax courts. Initially, I was called by the applicant. I inspected, my initial inspection was on October fourteenth of two thousand twenty-three. I did follow up on January ninth, twenty-four. And based on the plans Scott and Morgan provided, the subjects are inside irregularly shaped parcel of land zone B three-two with frontage along the south side of Long Chose Avenue. The site area fifty-four hundred acres to square feet. Including the four thousand eight hundred seventy-two square foot building, one story, built in nineteen thirty-three. Plus a five hundred square foot fenced larynx. In my estimation, the proposed question is further Chicago policy, Chicago own policies to enhance neighborhood assets, support diverse range of business commercial areas, preserve neighborhood character, while adding zero noise for existing businesses. Or if you're screaming noise, I know it's bringing up right on next one. To zero noise for existing businesses, encouraging expansion, instructing the areas of non-based, especially considering space moving quite soon. While using the building, the applicant states, they'll abide by chapters four dash sixty dash one forty slash G and four dash sixteen fifty sub C. Other Chicago code regarding prohibition of any live or loud recording, recording music. And further agrees there won't be any speakers, TVs, excessive noise to interfere with neighborhood's requests. As we've heard from consular and the applicants, they have taken all that in consideration when they down downgraded their thoughts of their initial project. Meaning they're in a lobby, they're using the old panel that they usually wanted. We've talked about the applicant's um experience with dogs and Scott with his hospital. After a community Zoom meeting on January tenth, twenty-four, the biggest concerns with neighbors were waste and noise. And the applicants had extensive, extensive conversations with waste management, incentive plan regarding waste, or garden's office. And it was always available, both Scott and Morgan separately and together. Spreading discussions with any community members. Waste, all waste will be disposed of in heavy duty construction bands. A small waste management obtained will be used and pickups will increase to twice week more than others. The applicant placed, I believe it's called Zev, where animals can always set to go to limit, try and eliminate as much order. And to deter as many rodents and rats as possible. The applicants have met with soundproof Chicago was, as consular mentioned. Met with soundproof experts. Including four and not limited to sound dampening panels. As far as support, the applicants, they had multiple people, business owners, police officers, people with without dogs to support this, including the North Center community center. And have reached out to the Alderman on several occasions with letters of support from the North Center neighbors, Lincoln Square, Ravenswood, Ravenswood Chambers. Mr. Chima, do you want me to go through the standards, each of them?
How much more do you got? A lot?
I wanna, I
I I think
You know, it's in my, all of this is in my report.
Let me, let me ask you a question. If you were to continue to testify, would you testify consistent with your report?
Except there's one change. My report initially said they're using the patio. That's changed because the community outreach.
Right, and so you would strike that from your report because the patio is not being used?
It's true.
Okay. All right, with that.
Uh we have nothing further, except I want to make sure that you have all of the documentation, which is here, looking at this panel, would you be able to tell us if it's?
I I mean, we we have, we have it all. I've I've got his
Letters of support?
Yes, I've got the letters of support.
I have more.
I've 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 got everything that you submitted.
I would trust that this panel talk with, at at Mike, that's given everything.
Yes.
So with that, uh we have nothing.
Okay, let's turn now to uh the objectors. Who would like to go first?
I'm going to go first.
Okay, could you state your name and address?
Do I have to give you my statement and artifacts? That's what the Alderman gave us.
Uh you've prepared it. Do you have, are, is there, is there an exhibit that you want to show us?
We all have separate, um my statement just has um emails and website documentation that supports it, so I just made copies of it.
Okay, if you want to submit it, you can submit it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there are all the three copies. And then I'll just read my statement quickly. Um and thank you, good afternoon, and thank you so for your time. My name is Tracy Flint. I live on two four 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 West Pensacola, Chicago. I am opposing the license for the dog bar tavern on twenty-four fifty-seven Montrose and the lifting of the liquor moratorium on the south side of Montrose from western to the river. I'm opposed because there is some lack of transparency and confusing information that has been posted, um the rodent problem in the alley and the negative impact on our neighborhood and community. In July of twenty twenty-three, a sign was posted on the window of twenty-four fifty-seven Montrose saying, coming soon, the Chicago Dog Bar. Uh that directed me to the owner's Kickstarter page. Once there, I found information proposing the indoor dog park tavern. The owner's page claimed to have support of the neighborhood, the North Center Neighbors Association and the Ravenswood Lincoln Square Chamber of Commerce. What page evidence? I immediately contacted the office of Matt Martin, forty-seventh Ward Alderman, to express concern about the sign, the project and the lifting of the liquor moratorium. Also, I emailed the North Center Neighborhood Association and the Ravenswood Lincoln Square Chamber of Commerce, who told me on eight-nine twenty twenty-three, our Our office only weighed in on the request from the forty-seventh ward. On a position related to lifting a moratorium on the liquor license in the area. They said they only weighed in on lifting the moratorium and not the business itself. This was confusing and a bit disingenuous on the part of the owners who posted this on their page, emails included. Another aspect of confusion is that the website states different hours of operation, closing ten P M on weekdays and eleven P M on weekends. Um, then the business license plan of operation, which the hours have now changed to Monday through Thursday, Sunday at nine. Um, Friday and Saturday, ten P M. Most recently via email, the owners communicated on April eighth that they were pulling the outdoor patio license request, which is appreciated. Uh, a week later, they said they wanted to perhaps be opening to revisiting the idea later. So that was a concern, emails included. We submitted letters to the North Center Neighborhood Association. And the Alderman's Office in August of twenty twenty-three, expressing concerns, excuse me. From neighbors about noise, parking, rodents, the outdoor cafe, and the lifting of the liquor moratorium. We had one Zoom meeting with Lucy nine, the owners, on one-ten twenty twenty-four. Neighbors then requested a second meeting with Matt Martin to emphasize our concerns for noise, waste, rodents, parking, and lifting the liquor moratorium. That was on March fourteenth. This was after the Neighborhood Association and Matt Martin's office sent letters to the zoning board, partially endorsing the plan. The alley on the twenty-four hundred block of West Pensacola is inundated with rodents. With a shell gas station on one corner, attack, the taqueria Cinco de Mayo on the other, and of course, the Aldi supermarket. Uh, after our concerns were shared, the dog bar did set forth their, um, accommodations for the waste storage and. The fact still remains that dog PCs attract rats. It would be impossible to say that this business would not be contributing to the rodent problem, a problem that the city readily acknowledges. I'm including a list of my two four 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 rodent abatement requests over the last few years. And a scatter plot diagram printed from Chicago Streets and Sands, featuring rat abatement requests for the area twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two. The dog bar sounds great in theory. The business model, though, is not clear or transparent. According to their website, they are a membership-only dog bar, charging membership for dog owners, but anyone over twenty-one can come in and drink. Given, um, Mr. TV's fifteen years as a bar manager, uh, etcetera, one thing is clear. That the business is a tavern at its core. It doesn't serve food, so that is where the business will have to generate money to be successful. In the Lincoln Square North Center, there are very few establishments that sell only alcohol. Um, it is not in keeping with the residential and neighborly feel of our area. Also, in their letters of support, the North Center Neighborhood Association and the Ravenswood Lincoln Square Chamber of Commerce. Site that Jimmy's Pizza Cafe across the street already sells beer and wine. And Aldi, um, sells packaged beer and wine. As reasoning for, partial reasoning for their approval for lifting the liquor moratorium. Although that is true, it is not an analogy. Jimmy's Cafe is a family friend friendly establishment that sells pizza, beer, and wine. Only, and Aldi is a grocery store that serves our community and, um, only sells beer and wine. It does not meet the criteria that it is in the interest of the public convenience. And it will have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or the community. For the reasons stated above, please oppose this project for sake of the residents, the community, and also the confusing messaging. And sometimes lack of transparency on the part of the owners. Thank you.
Would like to go next?
I'd like to go next. Um, thank you, um, Chairman Sanchez and board members. My name is Deborah Winiger. My partner and I live at twenty-four sixty West Pensacola. We live within forty-eight feet of the proposed dog bar. Um, we love dogs, but this at its core is a bar, and so that's what we are taking issues with. We all feel there's been, uh, communication gaps, confusion. I just want to read, and I have. Three sets of documents I want to submit for the record. And this latest one was from Matt Martin's office. And it says, the attendees of the January tenth meeting expressed frustration regarding the applicant's communication to members of the public. I, Matt Martin, chair of many of these concerns. My office has found many of the applicant's public communication to be confusing. And at times inaccurate. If you look at the aerial view that you see up there. You'll see that there's an Aldi parking lot. There's sixty parking lots there. There's about thirteen hundred cars that come and go throughout the day. So if we add more congestion and more parking, people are gonna start to spill over into Pensacola, which is where you see the number forty-seven. That's Pensacola. We're worried about that. We have concerns about that in regards to congestion, for safety of pedestrians. For safety of people, children going to school to water school. It's a big issue for all of us. The other area I just want to show, I'm sorry, this is old school. And this is what the back area looks like. It was a plant. Thank you. It was a plant, uh, house for thirty years. There's a nine by twelve large garage door there. And it was used as a loading dock. When they'd come and go, the, the truck would literally pull into here. So it wasn't blocking the alley for all of us to go to and from work. Also, the idea that we'll have, according to the architectural plans, eighty-five people can be in there and twenty-five dogs right behind there. That's concrete brick, concrete floor, and a plastic ceiling. And so the noise is what we're very much concerned with. You can also see that, as we pointed out before, Aldi's is not too far away. And so we're again worried about. The waste, which Tracy's already spoken about. And then the last thing I'll show you guys. Is the crosswalks. We have crosswalks here. There's actually five. And right here, you can see the proposed dog bar. We've got, get the kids going to school to water school that concerns us, and we all use that area. It's heavily trafficked already. So adding more to that and adding a bar is of real concern. And the last thing I want to point out is Bob and Sarah Santana live at twenty-four fifty-four West Pensacola. They are directly across from them, and they adamantly oppose this. They're in Italy, as I'm sure we'd all like to be in Italy. But they are in, out of the country. So they would have been here today. They signed the petitions that we passed around. And you'll see handwritten signatures from everybody in the last screen. And for those reasons, we hope you approve and deny this. Thank you.
All right, who'd like to go next?
Please me, uh, good afternoon. Thank you so much for listening to myself and my neighbors and our concerns. My name is Jamie Jackson. I'm a resident, but I'm also a principal planner at the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. Um, so I'm really kind of putting my, my planner hat on, uh, when I'm looking at this.
Before you continue, can you state your address for the record?
Yes, twenty-four fifty West Pensacola. Um, so, you know, I've had an opportunity to speak with the applicants, speak with my neighbors, and look at the application. And I am really struggling to see how this meets the standards of approval. Um, you can't look at zoning in a vacuum. It's context specific. And so the site of this proposed bar is at the end of a commercial corridor. It gets real quiet. There's no street activity after Aldi closes at eight o'clock. It's essentially dead there. So this is a, a significant increase in that land use activity right now. You combine that with the dogs, and while it is a tavern, I know the applicants, they wouldn't be opening this but for the dog component. Obviously, they've had to make some pivots with that. But you add in the tavern and impacts from the tavern, plus impacts from. Dogs who, you know, they work. That's just what they do. So we add that together, and you have a really. Eight, like a, a heavy increase in that land use intensity in a corridor that is just not like that currently. So, um, I wanted to make sure that, you know, being a good planner, I got my evidence there. Just did some research, though, entering into the record in some. Researchers that I did. Um, so these dog bars are wildly successful across the country, as the applicants noted. They're, um, in. Little Rock and they're in other places. There. But I just wanted to understand, what's the land use context for existing dog bars? And if you'll notice, the zoning districts are commercial, but also industrial districts. And if you look at the land use context of those areas where they are in commercial areas, there's significant buffering and setbacks. The proposed, uh, business here is directly adjacent to residential. There is no buffering. There are no setbacks to help mitigate. The impacts of this really intense land use. Um, we were very pleased to hear that they are eliminating the patio component, which was a big concern. Um, you know, but at the end of the day, because of the popularity of this kind of business model. And they will be successful because it's so widely desired to have that third place for a person to go with their dog. Um, in fact, uh, article came out in the Washingtonian, uh, in twenty twenty-two for physical park social in the. Bethesda suburbs in D C. And they noted that they have five thousand human and pet people that visit every week. So again, wildly successful, but those lead to significant impacts with traffic, parking, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so you, again, you combine, you combine all of those things together into a site. That is directly adjacent to residential, and it's just not compatible with existing land use. Um, again, looking at the Western Avenue corridor study, they also direct more intense land uses towards western at specific nodes. Not on this side of Montrose. Um, finally, you know, as planners, we really need to listen to people, and I think it's very apparent that my neighbors are not on board with this. Um, I, I, I had the opportunity to talk to, to, to Scott and Morgan, and they're, they're really lovely people, and this is a great concept. It really is. It's just not in the appropriate location. If it was in an industrial zone, or if it was a commercial district area that was better buffered from residential. I would be in support of it. I would want to take a dog there as myself. Um, so, uh, just because of the intensity of this land use, you know, no amount of, of soundproofing and buffer, buffer, uh. Soundproofing can really mitigate the impacts of this use. So, um, I'm requesting. That the board deny the application, and if they can't see to that, I haven't seen it written, and this is a question for staff. If they can include the loading dock door to be closed as a condition of approval as well. I just haven't seen that in the writing as part of the staff recommendation. So I thank you so much for your time and your consideration. I know it's been a long day. It's appreciated.
This is, yeah, this, this is not actually that long. We've, we've, we've been here until midnight or later before, so this is, uh, this is actually. Early, uh. All right, uh, before we head back to the applicant, uh, for a brief, uh, rebuttal and closing. Do any of the objectors have any questions for the applicant's witnesses? Okay, go ahead.
We emailed, these guys did reach out, received recommendation, um, last week they emailed us, but in that correspondence. We found out that the engineering drives showed that there was no more backdoor patio, but then there was some conflicting information. So they corrected that and got it back to us. But in an email, Morgan stated they wanted to leave open, as Tracy already attested to, in an email stating they'd like to leave open. That maybe in the future they would apply for a patio, uh, permit. So for us, again, that's, that's a deal breaker. Um, I just don't see how you can minimize the noise. Um, and again, if the dogs are on leash. Um, it's, it's really a major concern for us. So I would ask that that be a condition. If you decided to vote for this, that they should not have a outdoor patio.
Well, that, if, that's already part of the, uh, the, um. DPD's recommendation, and any approval, if it was granted, would be tied to the recommendation. So they would not be allowed to use that outdoor patio. But that doesn't prevent them from later, if they wish. Applying for another special use permit to increase the special use, but you would have the opportunity to object at that time, too, if they do that.
So just may I ask, so, so is that every year, if you're denied hypothetically in twenty twenty-four. Then you have to wait until twenty twenty-five, and then you could apply for special use permit? Is that correct?
Yes.
So every year hypothetically, you could apply for that? Is that?
Hypothetically.
Okay, I just wanted to ask. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a question of, um, if, in the form that you gave about the community outreach, we're kind of just. With ourselves, just, we didn't get that kind of outreach, and we're the neighbors directly behind. I mean, I did. We did attend the meeting with the Alderman. Um, I got a mailer about the zoning board meeting. Um. Really, up until. A week ago, we didn't have any email, uh, email or, or contact with, with them. And a lot of the people who signed the petition that we presented did not. So I'm not sure why. That's not, not what we've seen, but.
I think, I think they indicated it in their case, but we'll go ahead and respond to that.
Yeah, we didn't get any email addresses from the Alderman's office until the fifth of this month. They were, we had been asking, but they were, they kept, kept telling us the Alderman's office. They want to protect the privacy of constituents.
You could knock on our doors.
We, we posted on the doors.
Posted on our doors? Sorry.
Hold up, hold up. Uh, I'm sorry, you haven't even, um.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I've announced yourself as an, as an objector. And we have a court reporter here, just taking down anything. So if you want to speak, then you need to give your name and your address. Uh, so do you want to speak?
No, that's.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I think you answered the question. Um, all right, any other questions for the applicant's witnesses?
I do have one more. When did you decide to go the tavern route? Cause I'm unclear on the timeline.
Right from the beginning, because we had to, the only way we could serve alcohol is through, obviously, liquor license, and we couldn't use the incidental because of the food component.
The only way we could serve alcohol, go on, please.
Wait, it would be to have, obviously, a liquor license of some sort. We couldn't apply for an incidental liquor license, because we didn't have food, and we couldn't offer food because of the dog. So that was literally the only way that we could have any sort of alcohol.
Any other questions for the applicant's witnesses?
Um, sure, I, I'm, I know you've had to make a lot of concessions to make this work. And I guess my question is, why haven't you gone the route of a text amendment in order to. Cite this in the proper zoning districts, and that you could work with the health department to have the true off-leash dog park, um, that you, that you envisioned from the beginning.
As far as actually changing the regulations?
Um, yeah, a text amendment, because it just seems like you're trying to kind of shoehorn it into, to this site, because this is the site that you found.
Well, we actually have been working with some other Aldermen about that are very pro-dog, that want to actually change the legislation to read that way. We've just been essentially. Playing ball with everyone. So the, the city tells us this is how you do it, and it's unfortunately a process where you lease the space, and then you can start going through this. It's not. A, a process where I can go forward and, and maybe we don't secure the building, and, you know, you have to have a property first. So that's kind of the tough. Chicken before the egg situation we found ourselves in.
Do you have concerns about the dogs not being able to go outside and roam around and run? Just being inside?
The, because the main concept is really, I mean, obviously, there's places like Cody's Public House, that's right next to a residential building that's well-known. It's on the news for having dogs. In, inside the bar. Um, the, our main purpose is to cater to the people that can't when it's a bad weather day, you know, winter time. Bring your dog when it's raining outside, that kind of thing. So having the indoor space is the primary focus of the business from the get-go. The outdoor space to us was always a really nice bonus.
Okay, um, all right, so with that, let's go back to the applicant for. And I, I, I say brief, uh, as I mean it, uh.
I just wanted to address some of what the objector said, and I think Ms. Jackson asked a very pertinent question. Why are we doing this as opposed to coming up with a text amendment? Very difficult to do that. We are, there is a zoning path here, if that's what we're here. Um, tenants are allowed in this area with special use, and that is the normal direct path to do this. We had many meetings with the city, uh, who said, you can do it this way, you can't do it this way, you must do it this way. And that's where we, where we're at. Um, and that's why we're here. Um. And. Put it shortly, the city needs to straighten out for it and still to allow this kind of, it's, it's, it's a mess, Frank, and nobody knows what they're talking. Throughout the different department. Um, with that, I want to address a couple things. I appreciate, um, this packet that I received. These are bars in Little Rock, Arkansas, Massachusetts, Washington. If you want to talk about not being in context, I think this is it. Um, Chicago has different laws, is very stringent. I have no idea what the rules are here, frankly. The places that we, that we've been talking about, bars that do have dogs, I think the main thing, and talk about sneaking under the radar. I think that they just get their license and then have dogs without saying anything to anybody. We started this. this, the new, the question was, we haven't been transparent. We started this application with the city saying dogs are allowed, no food and, uh, not a, an animal care facility. We were being very transparent and frankly, I think we kind of shot ourselves in the foot because of what just coming and said, we want tavern license. This conversation would be very different. Um, and there would be not so much recourse, I think, uh, if the day of opening, they said, all your dogs are allowed, which I think is probably how ninety percent of the, the, uh, bars and taverns and city actually operate. So our whole thing is trying to be transparent. It sounds like the objectors, and I appreciate the objections, but it sounds like there'd be this with the alderman. And why wasn't this communicated? We've done a lot. Things have changed a lot. It seems like there's a lot of complaints about the initial thought about what this would be. That's kind of off the table right now. There was a complaint just now about our patio hours when, you know, this is ad nauseam. We, we're not having a patio because things change. This is changing until zoning board makes a decision until, uh, the local liquor control commissioner makes a decision. It's all in flux. Right now, uh, we have, I think, a workable plan. I don't think it's fair to say that there is nothing we can do to stop sound here. I, there's, we've done everything. You have to balance your needs with with the commercial needs. This is a commercial space on Montrose. A heavily trafficked area. Place is not open during school, so I'm not sure what the relevance of that is. As the report says, and what, what Mr. Wallen would have said, you know, if we're talking about traffic and pedestrians, his report is replete with discussions about that. It is not going to affect this. One more thing. Make sure I hit, hit everything. Um, you know, I always try to go back to, uh, your four-pronged special use analysis. I'm going to skip that, but I think it was one. Hit that all. We talk about the origins itself, though. There's conditions for approval, seventeen thirteen, oh nine, oh six. It essentially says you got to work with the zoning administrator, um, to ensure that any adverse impacts are mitigated. I don't think that you said that that wasn't done here. This is mitigated within an inch of its light at this. Um, not only that, but in, in a practical situation, you've got the dog bar, which is now closed up like above an empty outdoor space that will not be used. An alleyway. The garages and then alleyway, a backyard and then a house. Think about this in a practical situation. It's, it's hard to see and it's all speculation on anybody's part. Hard to see how this is going to impact the noise, light, rodents, that type of thing. By the way, I think, like I said before, I think that beef is with other businesses. I feel bad that there are rodents in the alleyway. They probably didn't go, I, I don't think Alan went through this process. And maybe the taco place didn't either. That's what we're here for. And that's what they, you know, along the way, they've met every single demand and never said no to any request from the alderman or the constituents or the zoning administration. And I think because of that, because of all of the changes that they've made, all of the concessions that they we're going to ask that we improve the special use.
Yeah, uh, because of, uh, the, uh, the Oscar music might start playing. We do have some questions though, from, uh, from the board. So, uh, Kuscher Brooks, please go ahead.
Okay, first, um, thank you all for being here. Jamie, thank you for nerding out on planning stuff as a planning geek. I appreciate that. I do have a question. You did mention school and the attorney did tap on, I'm, I am trying to find out, you brought up schools and this seems to be after school hours. Mind you, I don't have kids, so maybe it's not, but what is your specific concern if school, they're not walking from school when this facility is open?
Thank you for asking. I mean, for the record, I do not have children. My partner and I do not have children. Um, but we have close to fifty children on our block. It is a heavily, you, these, every, there's a lot of young couples there with a lot of children. So Halloween is a really great time for them. It's a busy time. Water School is on Campbell and as I pointed out before, Campbell is within literally Campbell Street compared to where their bar is proposed is very close. So you have four crosswalks between Campbell on the Campbell gets cut off at Montrose, so it jogs. So here's Campbell going to Water School, then it jogs over and then it goes Campbell and goes southbound towards Irving Park. And so along that stretch along Montrose, there are four different crosswalks. The crossing guards there, I, I, I've asked her about her concerns for traffic. She said it's gotten worse. Um, and there's concerns about people and traffic going by. And so it's just heavily, it's a really, really, it gets back up to the point it crosses Western Avenue and people can't get through. So it's already a heavy, heavy traffic area. So kids coming from Water School, there's after-school programs, there's also weekend programs. It's not just like it buttons up at three thirty. So.
Essentially, you would have a problem with any commercial business going in there?
I don't think if it was, uh, if it was a coffee house, I don't think I would, no.
Yeah, I think to speak to that, because I do take my kids across, um, Montrose there to, to school. And, and Ms. Maggie will, the crossing guard will tell you that people do not like to stop there. And so I think some of the concerns, my kids are in Africa right now. Um, we, we don't stop at three thirty. We, they go until five or six. So we're constantly using that crosswalk and I think the concern is just because um, this is a place where people will, will probably drive. Um, certainly they'll walk there after work on, on nice days, but in inclement weather, which is, this is, um, designed for as well, that it's an indoor space. People will be driving there. So those additional travel trips along the road would potentially have more areas of conflict.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. I want to thank everyone for your time and input. We will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take a picture of your, uh, what you're living. I'm sorry, but I at least take a picture. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. So. So she can type it up.
See this year?
You were there.
I was there. I'm still recovering.
Me too. And I had to go to DC after that, so.
Oh my God.
Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, right.
I almost wish somebody would have read it for him. I felt so bad for him. Thank you.
We're so, we're still going. Okay. Uh, I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to section two C four of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes for enclosed session. I vote yes, we're in closed session. Okay, I move that we return to open session, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. We will now vote, note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department. And any additional conditions read by me. First, I move to approve all continuance requests to the dates stated by me, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve all withdrawal requests, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, withdrawals are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers one sixty-one twenty-four S, one sixty-two twenty-four Z. And one sixty-three twenty-four Z, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one sixty-four twenty-four Z, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number one sixty-five twenty-four Z, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers one sixty-six twenty-four Z and one sixty-seven twenty-four Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one sixty-eight twenty-four Z, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers. One sixty-nine twenty-four Z and one seventy twenty-four Z. I matured Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one seventy-one twenty-four S, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one seventy-two twenty-four S, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one seventy-six twenty-four S, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yeah.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers one seventy-seven twenty-four Z and one seventy-eight twenty-four Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one seventy-nine twenty-four C, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one, uh sorry, forty-six twenty-four C. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers sixty twenty-four Z and sixty-one twenty-four Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number sixty-six twenty-four S, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact. Consistent with the votes of the board at its March fifteen twenty twenty-four regular meeting, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes. The written resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting, Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, and we are adjourned, thank you, everyone, have a great weekend.